Uh, City Secretary?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna fill in for her?
Yes, sir.
Would you please read the call?
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Tuesday, July 31st, 2007, at 6:00 PM, in the Commission Chambers, on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Mayor, I would move we go into executive session.
The motion is second in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion carries.
We'll be right back, ladies and gentlemen. It shouldn't take very long. Who's gonna lead us to pledge allegiance? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. What nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all? Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas one and indivisible. Thank you.
Is anybody here gonna lead us in a prayer? No prayer today? Okay.
Father Frank?
Father Frank?
Father Jerry Frank, will you lead us in prayer?
Lord, we take this opportunity to ask you for the spirit of unity and peace among our commission, among our city, but a peace that's genuine and real, built on justice. May their deliberations build up justice and give them the courage to do the things that justice demands so that everybody's needs get met. Everybody is important. And give us a forgiving spirit so that when we get in one another's backs, we realize we're all brothers and sisters and extend the hand of forgiveness. And with forgiveness and justice, we'll have a true peace in our community. And we ask this especially for our City Commission. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. Okay, um, no action is needed. Executive session matters. I'm gonna move, uh, item, um, four up to the front because I think there's a lot of people for item two and three here. Uh, but before then, we'll take the public comments. Uh, who signed up first and did you listen?
We have fourteen public comments, Mayor.
Fourteen public comments. Whew.
Don't speak.
Don't speak, Mayor.
That's three minutes apiece. Okay. Okay. Can we cut it down to two minutes apiece for the fourteen, okay? Would you please do two minutes apiece? Okay? That should be sufficient. And if you can keep it under two minutes, it would be appreciated, okay? Thank you. Who's the first one?
Sofia Esteve.
Please come forward.
Two minutes, Mayor.
Thank you for coming and, uh, please state your name up here at the podium.
Two minutes or three minutes?
Two minutes. Cause there's fourteen. There's a lot.
Hello, my name is Sofia Esteve. I am seventeen years old and I am speaking on behalf of the Camille Playhouse. Having participated heavily within the Camille, I've been able to witness firsthand the market has made on our community, for myself and for others who do not excel in sports and other such activities. It has given us a chance to thrive and express ourselves in a unique way. My experience there has given me a confidence that cannot have been found anywhere else and that I will carry down whatever path I choose in the future. This theater has given me so much and I can only hope that you will recognize the precious gift it is and give it the help it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And maybe everybody will follow your example. Thank you. Next.
Daniel Kramnik.
Could you, uh, before you come on up here, would you just read out the names and have them stand over here? That way, uh, they're ready to go.
You want me to read them?
Yeah, would you read the names before you get started?
John Kench.
Pardon me?
John Kench.
John, would you please take a position?
Pearl Frye. Dave Lopez. Fernando Ruiz. Moises Gonzalez. Gail Goodman. Francisco C. Fuentes. Roman Perez. Robert Uresti. Alex Resendez. John Shergold. And Cesar Trevino.
Okay, Daniel, state your full name and go ahead.
Hello, my name is Daniel Kramnik. I'm eighteen years old and I recently graduated from Gladys Porter High School and I'm also speaking on behalf of the youth of the Camille Playhouse. Over the past four years, I've participated not only in main stage productions at the Camille Playhouse, but I've also been a director of the Summer Workshop for Kids. Every summer, over two hundred of Brownsville's children welcome theater into their lives as they participate in the plays that we put on. Teaching at the Camille Playhouse has made me decide to change my career pathway from engineering to teaching theater. By applying the skills I've learned, I've been accepted into the University of Houston for theater. The Camille Playhouse has shown me that theater is more than just an extracurricular activity. I can make a life from it. It's more than just entertainment, as many people may think. By participating at the Camille Playhouse, children can learn the basic skills needed for their futures. By passing this ordinance, you will give other children the opportunities I've had. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kench?
My name is John Kench. Mayor and City Commissioners, forty-two years ago, the Sam's Foundation built the Camille Playhouse in memory of Camille Leitner and gave it to Brownsville as a community theater through the, for the use of Camille players to produce live theater for the people of Brownsville. Our theater is an asset to the City of Brownsville. We serve more than the local community. Tourists, winter visitors, professionals moving into this area look for cultural venues, the performing arts, museums. These people find our theater, frequent our performances, and continually comment on the outstanding quality of our shows directed by Ben Agreste, our artistic director. Our theater is self-supporting. There is no endowment fund. There are no fixed annual contributions from benefactors. We do not receive cash infusions from the Sam's Foundation. Each year, we start with nothing in the bank and we end the year with most of it left. For the past few years, the city has budgeted us about twenty-one thousand from hotel motel tax revenues, acknowledging that we do draw people to Brownsville. But the reality is that we need more help from you to meet our expenses and to grow with the city. No community theater can survive on box office alone. In addition to the six main shows of three musicals and three plays, be they drama or comedy, the Camille Playhouse is known for our children's workshop and our mid-year youth theater productions. The Summer Workshop, again under the direction of Ben Agreste, has enabled the children of Brownsville to participate in named musicals like Annie, Beauty and the Beast, Seussical the Musical, The Pirates of Penzance. These productions are made available for all to see for a five-dollar ticket fee. Mid-year performances are scheduled for schoolchildren to attend as school field trips. Attendance this past season was ten thousand one hundred and sixty-three people. Quality theater for adults, wholesome entertainment and learning experiences for our youth. This is our product. This is our contribution to the city. We have lived up to the vision of the Sam's family. But we need your financial support, be it in form of the fee attached to a utility bill or a contribution from the general budget. We need your support to keep live theater living.
Thank you. It's nice to know all the citizens that come up here.
Yes, right.
Be gentle on me.
It's also nice to know the Mayor and the Commissioners. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for affording us the opportunity to have some input at this meeting. My name is Pearl Frye and I'm here as a concerned citizen of Brownsville. There has been much discussion about the two-dollar fee imposed on all of us who are PUB customers and there have been some questions raised by Troyani, Mr. Troyani and others about the legality of that fee. My question is, if it is illegal to impose such a fee because it is in violation of our city charter, then is it also not illegal, also illegal or not illegal to impose the current maintenance fee which we've been paying for the last nine years? Just because something was done back then and nobody said anything about it does not make it right. Is the fee legally imposed or not? That's my question. If not, then I think we should have to quit paying for it. I realize that it pays for many city services, but it's not equitable because there are many people in Brownsville who are not served by PUB. Not everybody even uses PUB water. So how have they been paying all these years? I doubt that they have paid and therefore if we're not all required to pay, then none of us should be required to pay. My suggestion then is that we take the excess sales tax or hotel tax receipts and earmark them for new ambulances and personnel to man them, as well as for other worthy projects such as Camille Playhouse. I heard someone say that we have enough ambulances. What we need is trained personnel to operate them. I don't know if that's true. If it is, let's hire trained people to man all these ambulances. Our sales tax revenue has grown substantially over the past few years and since that revenue is not part of the budget, I wanna know how it's being used. You know, what happens to that extra revenue that was not budgeted? I also beg you to avoid increasing property taxes at all costs. We already have too high taxes. Maybe you could raise user fees.
Thank you, Pearl.
Thank you.
David Lopez.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor. You all know me. I'm Dave Lopez with the Brownsville Firefighters and the PAC Chairman for our local and I'm with the Brownsville Unions Coalition. Today's tragedy on Potosline Road is exactly what we're talking about. That call came in at fifteen-twenty hours, three-twenty. Medic six arrived at fifteen-thirty, ten minutes, a whole ten minutes to get there. For a call like that, I know the guys tried their best to get there as fast as they could, but the bottom line is, we have five minutes. We need to be at the call within five minutes. And that was doubled today. On any given day and almost every single day, several times a day, the nine-eleven operators will announce that all medic units are busy. I'm just, I don't know if that happened when this call came in today, but I wouldn't be surprised. And this can go on for anywhere from five minutes to half an hour, forty-five minutes. So if one of our loved ones go down, there's not an ambulance that's gonna be able to respond from Brownsville. We have to wait for Port Isabel or Rosfresos. The Commission is supposed to look out for our community and I understand that some misguided people are against the fee and more ambulances. But still, one day, we're gonna have to respond to their emergency because everybody in this room's gonna, one time or another, gonna call the ambulance. We still have to do these things and I wish that the Commission would really think hard on it because we have to protect these zealots anyway. That's all I got, except for to say that we have a petition circulating and we're still gonna try to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can't do that. Do I look like a clown or what? Because he did that to me the other day. I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to him.
Please, wait, hey.
Talking to him.
Mr. Reese, let's have some respect here.
Well, he's done that twice already. I'm not a clown.
Look, you're my friend, but if not, they will have to take you out. Now, please don't do that. Address the chair. Don't get personal, okay? Please, okay? Cause if not, they will take you out.
Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon.
Mr. Reese, we welcome you here.
Please. I'm here to find out really what type of people or what kind of people live in this community. Two dollars for me and I have a limited budget is nothing if it's for the purpose that Mr. Omar here, who deserves my respect and I salute him, in trying to do something to care for these living beings. These animals are living beings. Have you held a little cat in your hands? Have you felt his heart palpitate? Have you seen how she cares for her litter when she has those babies, how she protects them? I guarantee you, there's some women that envy how these animals take care of their young ones. And we are destroying them. They have just as much right as we to live in this world. They are living beings. And we need to respect them and we need to fix this matter immediately. Two dollars is no money. Let's find out where we're gonna get them. We can get them from the piggy bank. Just save the change that you get from HEB every day and you have those two dollars. But remember, they're part of family. This is how I was brought up. The mascot was part of my family. There was love and affection to and from. And what else? The most important thing of all is, you know what? Loyalty.
Mr. Reese, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners and all the residents of Brownsville here today. I'm here to speak about the two-dollar fee that's gonna be assessed to all PUB utilities, to people who receive the bills for PUB. I can certainly understand the projects and the goals that the Mayor wants to understand are very noble and they should be supported. Of course, with all projects and everything else, where are we gonna get the money? It's always an issue. Certainly, two dollars to our PUB bill. In my opinion, for me personally, I have no problem with that. I think it should be assessed and I'll gladly pay it. The problem is, I certainly understand the viewpoint of the Commissioners who maybe don't wanna support that. And the fact being that you're out to look out for the best interests of the people. So I'm here to offer you, uh, maybe a median. And a median is to, for both of you, for both sides, different sides to come to an agreement, is give the option to the person paying the bill, give them the option to opt out. Very simple. If they wanna participate, if they're that adamant, I'm sorry, if they don't wanna participate, if they're that adamant, I'm not paying those two dollars. Very simple. Give them the option, take you two minutes, write a letter, include it and say, "I do not wish to participate." I think most of our, most of the people in Brownsville, most people here love our city. They wanna work towards improving it. These are goals that should be supported and if you give the people of Brownsville the opportunity to make the choice, I think you'll be surprised that people will come to the plate and say, "I'll support it." But you gave them that option. And I think it'll be a medium for both sides, come to an agreement, and I think also the customers who participate will be happy because you give the power to the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please, go forward. Ms. Goodman?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Gail Goodman and I'm here to speak in support of the two-dollar fee on the PUB bill. Brownsville has grown dramatically in exciting and wonderful ways over the years, from our museums that support our history of our city and our culture, to the different facilities that are now involved in supporting the arts and culture in our community, to our new animal shelter and the services that it is to provide to our community, as well as the ambulances, the Camille Theater, the other things of that sort that are now part of daily life in Brownsville, Texas. These things contribute to the quality of life for every single person in our town. The young people that are speaking to you, our elderly, whether you're rich, poor, or fall down in the middle, these are the things that an innovative, progressive city provides. And they all need the financial, consistent support of the community. And a two-dollar fee is a nominal, perhaps averages out to roughly seven cents a day to make this kind of funding consistently there for the wonderful things that we're building and need the support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Just state your name before you speak, if you would do that. Everybody knows you, but state it for the record.
Yeah, my name is Jacoberto Barrera. I have some good news. PUB votes to lower late charges. But yet, we come to the meeting, the first week, and my support for you, Perumaya, is still strong. Just because one issue is not in my liking, that doesn't mean that I have lost support for you because in the long run, I think you'll do all right for the city. But now we have a burden of two dollars that is gonna be lowered from three to two. A lot of people say that two dollars is not that big of a thing. And for us middle class, probably it's not that much. But ladies and gentlemen, first, we want some more. You got, you have five ambulances, I understand. You might want five, another five more. But you know yourself that all ten ambulance are not out doing their work at one time. After that, you're gonna ask us tomorrow for more personnel for those ambulances. The following week, you'll ask us for more money for new buildings at different places. Ladies, gentlemen, you know, gentlemen, when will this stop? You see? You have to learn to live within your means. You have to be frugal, tacaña, orron with our money. But if this is not happening, of course, we don't wanna be like Matamoros with all the shaggy dogs running all over the place, the kids running around, they got deceased and so forth. What I suggest, like somebody suggests, pick them up. Find the owners and find them also for the upgate at the dog pound.
Thank you, Ms. Barrera. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Francisco C. Fuentes. I'm a resident of Brownsville, a voter and a taxpayer. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Somebody stole my lines. They said something to the fact that let those people who spoke on behalf of the two-dollar fee, let them be volunteers and pay in this fine. Don't impose it on me. My daughter took up dancing, I had to pay. Everything that I have done, I have done it the hard way. And when somebody imposes something on me, I get very, very angry. And Mayor, you know that. We've been friends for a few years and we fought all these increases. You fought with all hand in hand in the past and now things have changed. We have not lost respect for you, but Commissioners, you need not to abstain. We need to know where you stand because next time around, we need to know where you stand. If you abstain, you're not serving the best interest of the citizens of Brownsville. I have a few signatures, probably about fifty, from this morning to today. Only one person did not want to sign because he was undecided. Not he was for the two dollars, but most of them were against the two dollars. And they did voluntarily sign all these. They put their address, name, address and their signatures. And I had one person who did not want to sign. But if you wanna impose these two dollars, let it be volunteer. Let's sign up with PUB that we wanna take it out or not. Don't impose it on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reese. Mr. Uresti, please come forward. State your full name.
Roberto Uresti. Commissioners and Mayor, first of all, before I go into my topic, I talked to this young ladies over here and they said, "If you're gonna talk against or for the two-dollar, which is the number two," or, it was supposed to be done at that time. They said not to use the public comment. It seems like we had a miscommunication here.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. First, the roads. That's what I put down. Eagle Drive, they're still working on that for two months. They blame it on the weather. Okay. But sometimes they haven't done anything. School starts in three weeks. It's a mess.
It'll be done. You can't talk, please, we can't exchange. We have to hear the listener.
It's not foreign and we're doing it.
We can, we can address labor. Right now, we're not the exchange. Address your comments to me, please.
Yes, sir. The road needs to be done in a more adequate and faster way. It hasn't been done. They have only done one section and they haven't even paved anything. Three weeks to go to school. You wanna see a mess down there? It is gonna be a mess. Since everybody's talking about everything else, well, I can add something too. My mother, eighty years old, said this. She wouldn't mind paying three or four dollars if the money would go to the people that really need it in Brownsville, the elderly, the sick, the children that don't have the medical benefits, and there are thousands of those. The Camille Playhouse has not died. It has never died. Since I was born, that place was built. And I remember going to Ringo Park and there was no swimming pool. It was a baseball field in nineteen fifty-four. The Camille Playhouse has done a good job. I haven't gone in twenty years. I've only gone one time. They do their thing, that's great. I'll speak the rest on the public.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Please go forward and just go ahead. State your name, please.
Good evening, Mayor. You already know me and most of these guys, they know me. My name is Alex Resendez. With all due respect, I wanna speak about two little things. One of them, I wrote a letter to the editor about a few months back in April and it said about a dream that I had had about a flood, that I could not get out of the expressway. The streets were flooded. I went to Port Mansfield. There was a lot of deer in the streets about two, three days ago because of the flood. There were deer all over Port Mansfield, okay? Now, my dream came true. Most of the United States and most of Texas is flooded right now and we haven't had hurricanes, okay? We're thinking about the two-dollar fee and this and that and the dogs and the cats and if a hurricane hits us or if we have a big flood, we're gonna be in a jam, believe me. It's not only my dream, it can happen. That's one thing I wanna say. So what are we doing for the streets? I wanna thank you all for fixing my street, huh? Mr. Sineros, you all have done a great job. I saw you out there going house by house. The city looks good. The city looks good, you know? And also, I see you have improved your protection now, you know? This guy didn't stand a chance of speaking, you know, cause you got policemen's all over the place, which is good, you know? I'm not against policemen's, you know? But they do scare me a little bit, okay? Okay, now, especially when you're not an attorney, you know? You have here two attorneys. You have Mr. Tealoni and you have Mr. Goza. And with two attorneys and a very smart, intelligent man as a mayor, you all cannot pass or cannot flunk it or whatever. You all don't know which way to vote. I don't have intelligence, but you are insulting my intelligence. I try to figure out, two attorneys and a gentleman right here that has done business for years, very intelligent man that he won. All the people are watching us in la televisión. They're watching me right now. I look like a clown, maybe. I hope I don't say a word and come and they get me arrested. Now, the next thing I wanna talk about is this.
Your time's up. I'm sorry.
Ay, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Two million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand. Two million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand. That's what you are collecting from the service fee.
Thank you.
And you don't pay for the dogs and the perros?
Thank you.
Mayor and, just for the record, I think, I think I'm a little smart, you know? I wanna be included.
Hello, my name is Cesar Trevino.
Put the mic closer to you, Mr. Reese.
My name is Cesar Trevino and I'd just like to say, I approve of all these guys that talk for the, for the fee. Unlike the statements on the, on the animals, on the Camille Playhouse, on the, on the ambulances, for the amount of money, you can't go wrong, you know? It's the best bargain in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Finally, but not least, Mr. Shergold.
Ladies and gentlemen, no, I just did that because they're all gentlemen, right? Listen, I'm here today and Mr. Reese made a little comment about hurricanes. I'm down here to talk about hurricane preparedness. I believe that we're facing a possible Uh, I believe that we're facing a possible crisis in the future, and I have a few suggestions, possibly, that you can place on the agenda, uh, maybe next times that you can't respond tonight. One of the things that I think that oughta be done, is that we oughta go ahead and start preparing for the hurricane before it gets here. Uh, one thing I don't understand, and I've never understood this, and I'm only half smart, and these people behind me are a lot smarter than me, but I think they would agree with me, that we oughta prepare, and you know how we could do that? Start preparing and start filling out those sandbags today. Fill out those sandbags today, and I know for a fact that you've got a lot of storage out there at the airport. We oughta go ahead and fill those sandbags out, store them out there at the airport, and you know what? There's something else we oughta do. We oughta go ahead and make a plan to take those sandbags to the voting precincts, so that all these people who live in this wonderful city of ours can go ahead and go to those voting precincts, if there are local schools or high schools, or what it might be, and select, and get those sandbags, instead of all going over, over there to the, uh, main center of Old Coffeeport Road, and have traffic jams, have possible, you know, uh, uh, you know, a panic set in. It would just be better if we had these things filled out, ready to go, and distribute them locally here within the city. That's a good idea, let's do something about it. Let's form a hurricane preparedness committee. Let's, let's, I'll challenge the mayor, I'll challenge all the commissioners tonight. Let's place this item on the agenda next week, and let's prepare and make a hurricane committee, and let's appoint a committee to go ahead and make a report on how we can become better prepared, and there's precedent, the county does that. It's done over cities in the state of Texas. That's something we can do to get prepared. Let's don't wait till the last second, like we've been doing for years and years. You know, uh, preparation always, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shergo.
Item number four, consideration and action on resolution number 2007-041, updating the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee duties and membership.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners.
Please state your name.
My name is Lucy Garza. I'm the Housing Manager for the City of Brownsville, uh, Planning Department. Um, staff has reviewed the, uh, resolutions that were submitted, and recommends for approval on 2007-041-A.
Okay. The staff recommends, uh, A then, you say?
Yes, sir.
Have you all looked at the ordinances? Uh, anybody wanna ask any questions? Who's approved A? Okay. Can I have a motion for approval?
Well, I guess the question is, what is the difference between A and the, uh, the following?
And B and C.
Um, A is, A is a revision of, of both B and C, and A is, uh, it meets all HUD's, uh, rules and regulations. And it also complies with the consolidated plan that we have, it's a five-year plan for the City of Brownsville. It's basically, uh, um, the resolution is basically for, uh, just reviewing the B C A C, uh, duties and responsibilities.
And it doesn't change the administration of that?
No, e- everything remains the same. We just made it to, uh, A is basically to comply with, with HUD regulations, and to meet our, our, uh, five-year plan.
You're just, you're just making it better to where we, in compliance, okay?
Right, right, because the other ones would, some of the words, wording would be out of compliance, so, uh, that's, that's the, the difference.
I move to approve, letter, resolution number A.
Motion by Mr. Longoria, and second by Mr. Atkinson.
Mayor, one question, real quick.
Mr. Camarilla has a question.
Lucy, on consolidated plan, that's separate from this, that's a in-house plan that you all developed?
The consolidated plan is, uh, a five-year plan that we have for the federal funds that we receive, which is City BG, Home and E S G. Uh, the current plan that we have is the original plan, uh, and it relates to the B C A C, because, uh, the B C A C is the, the committee that recommends their funding to the City Commission.
But the consolidated plan, is that created by you all, or that was created by HUD and passed down here?
The consolidated plan was created by us in consultation with, uh, the Social Services, uh, other housing entities, um, various, uh, people, individuals, and also it, it compiles the information that was, uh, that we received from the public hearings from the B C A C.
Okay, thank you.
And would it still allow for the same allocation of funds for different uses for, uh, such as street paving, et cetera, in the southmost area?
Um, the funding that is allocated to each project, it depends on, on the recommendation that the B C A C submits to City Commission, and-
You're talking about the committee, you're talking about the committee, right?
Right. The B C A C is the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee, and whatever they submit, uh, that they recommend is, and whatever you all approve. But, uh, this includes, uh, and everything that's eligible, uh, that's what they fund. Did I answer your question?
Okay.
Is there any more questions?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Longoria, and it was seconded by Mr. Atkinson.
Seconded by me, sorry.
Okay, by Mr. Garza then, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All the bows, motion carries nationally, thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Item number three.
Do you want to do number three or number two?
Number three, we're working from down up.
Consideration and action regarding allocation of $2 of the $4.50 maintenance fee currently assessed in the Brownsville Public Utilities Billing Statement.
And Mayor, may I just mention, as was indicated earlier, these are public hearings. So if anyone has not already spoken on these-
This is an action item.
This is an action. It's also a public hearing as well. It's, it's, after the public hearing is closed, you will be able to vote on it. But, um, if there's anyone else who's not already spoken on-
This is a straight action item, it's not-
It's not shown as a public hearing.
It was intended to be a public hearing, I think that's what the-
Okay, um, I, I, I can allow people to speak on the, on the issue, so if, if you wanna speak on the issue, please, uh, you already spoke on it, uh, Mr. Orlando Trevino has not spoken. Uh, okay.
Can we make a clarification, just so they can understand, this is the $2 imposed on, imposed on the $4.50. The one that we're about to undertake on number two is another, a separate ordinance. This is the ordinance in writing, this is gonna be for a $2 allocation on an existing $4.50 chart.
Those $4.50 that, that the P U B is picking up right now, for the, for the maintenance fee?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Commissioner Leo Garza's recommendation on this, is that instead of charging additional $2, is out of those $4, take 2 from there, so nobody's being charged, and putting it toward, uh, the, the arts and the, so it's no extra charge. It's just transferring the, from the $4.50 to, $2 out of the $4.50 to, to fund those things.
We're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
People do that every day.
It's alright, but we're gonna, we're gonna make a judgment, come on.
I'm trying to get it.
Okay, you are, you have some safely saved.
Yes, uh, I would prefer, my na, uh, Mayor, uh, Commissioners, my na, uh, public, my name's Orlando Carlos Trevino, resident from Brownsville, voter and everything else. I, I would prefer seeing this, the $2 taken out of the $4.50, because that's something that's already been charged. That other $2, I cannot see, and the reason I cannot see it, I will tell you. You're saying P U B, uh, what, how about the other, uh, how about the other, uh, entities, uh, like CPNL, none of them are being charged. But I'll tell you who 65% of P U B customers are. That's housing, the poor, the elderly, the people on fixed incomes. They can't afford $2. If you take a look and you see the, the Police Department, every, every year, they have those toy drives for Christmas and everything else for, for kids, because the parents can't afford to pay $5 for a toy. But yet, you want these same parents to go give $2 that they ain't got? $2 times 12 is $24. You cannot buy a pair of Nikes, but you can go to Payless Shoe Stores and buy a $10, $12 pair of shoes for your kids. Secondly, I have no problems that you take $2, but those $2, I mean, people don't understand the $4.50, they've been paying for years and years. Take the $2 from the $4.50, $2.50 goes into maintenance, and $2 goes into your other projects. But I still say to this day, that people are more important than dogs, and I own one. I own one, so nobody can tell me. But if you go down Old Portisabell Road, there's a black dog that's got mange all over the place, but they can't pick up that dog because the place is already full.
That's not true.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I drove by there-
And, and let me tell you something, I don't know if I'd wanna be your dog.
What, uh, sir, you just, I will, I will tell you one, I will tell you, I will tell you one thing, Mayor. I will tell you one thing, sir. When a person is speaking in the public, uh, audience, it's a violation of the Texas Open Meeting Act to interrupt. I, I did not offend you, I was talking about a subject, and I was interrupted.
This is not public comment, it's a public hearing.
It is, uh, a public comment, public hearing. In other words, when I am speaking-
You're making misstatements here, you're making misstatements.
Uh, no, no, it's not a misstatement. I can take you tomorrow morning, and I'll show you that dog right there on Old Portisabell Road. I can show you my dog, my dog's behind the fence.
There, there's a thousand dogs running loose, they were running loose before I got elected, Mr. Trevino.
That's right, and there's no room to keep them, correct?
And, and people call, we pick up, we pick up pets, so don't think we don't, we do pick them up.
I, that one's been there, and I can show you tomorrow if you wanna see it.
I'm sorry, did you call it in?
Uh, yeah, it has been called in.
How do you, did you call it in?
Yes, I did call it in, Mr. Mayor. And like I said, when I am speaking, I was speaking about a general, uh, subject, I should not have been interrupted, sir.
Please continue then.
Okay. But basically, I'm also looking at the elderly, I'm looking at the less fortunate, I'm looking at the people with fixed income. That $2 that we're talking about, my mother, may she rest in peace, she was 94, but that, that, that $2 used to buy her fruits or whatever, tortillitas, she, I mean, she was, uh, uh, she was 94, she couldn't eat that much. But that $2 would buy her an orange, would buy her a little, uh, apple and stuff like that. The elderly, and I know because I worked for the Texas Department of Human Services, those elderly only get $10. They wanted me to investigate one time, elderly that were 70 years old on $10 for food stamps, and see if they were fraud. I said, "You crazy?"
Okay.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. Who, who's next? Uh, okay, please come forward, state your name.
Hello, my name is Roman Perez, I, nice to see you all, good evening. Uh, I, I'm a little bit confused tonight, just because of the fact that you all are going out of order in three and, uh, three and two. Uh, so I'm gonna try to combine what I was planning on talking on each individual one, because I was hoping you all would give everybody an opportunity to speak on each individual item. The fact of the matter is, I appreciate, I truly, truly, Commissioner Garza, I appreciate this idea of doing the $2 and the $4.50. I, I, it's a, a very great idea, except the problem is, is I foresee something in the future, and I'm not this genius guy, but I foresee that this idea of doing the $2 will cause some problems for our Finance Director. He's going to have to find a way to make up for those $2 loss that you all are going to be putting in, and taking out from the $4.50. What that's gonna do is going to be increasing our taxes. We all know this, that's what you all want to do, that's fine. This isn't a threat, this isn't a promise, but it's gonna probably cause some of you all not to be reelected in a couple of years, maybe in four years. The fact is, you all haven't even looked at what the Appraisal District has given you all. You all don't know if the appraised values have gone up, and you all can keep the tax rate at the same rate? You haven't figured that out yet? He has?
We have.
You all, you have?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because you said last week, you all are gonna have to take about two weeks of the August 7th meeting. And I'm glad you all have that information. But the thing is, is if you all have to increase the rate, you're gonna have some problems there. But here's a solution, here's a small solution. Uh, I was figuring that if you all were to do $2 for the next two months, each month get $4 from each individual person that uses P U B, that's 44,000, 44,000 people. I was figuring about, I don't know, like $180,000, somewhere around that figure. Why don't you all use some of the excesses in the general fund? Take it out and use it for those issues that you all truly, truly believe in, and wait till the budget comes out, and focus on that, if that's what you all truly, truly believe. But I have a small problem with that, it's because you all focusing on two cultural issues. Last week when we had the rains, I happened to be at the historical Brownsville Museum, and, uh, I loved it because they have this baseball, uh, collection, as Rene Torres is doing, and it rained, it poured, it poured, it poured, it poured. Water leaking from that beautiful roof, water leaking like crazy, they had to put trashcans to get that water out. I saw little boys with tr, uh, sewing trunks pushing a Mustang out of the water because it kept going down. Now, I would appreciate you all maybe focusing some of that money, not just on two entities, but more entities as well, so that everybody can get a little piece of the pie. And also maybe focus a little bit on drainage, I know you all doing a great job, I know the Public Works Department, I've seen that little ad on Channel 12, I don't know how many times a day, and you all are doing a good job, so I appreciate it. But really think about what these $2 are really all about, and that's also to increase our taxes. Let's think about it, spend some of the money we already have in the budget right now, and then focus on it next year. I hope you all really think about it, and not just nod your, nod or, or smile or smirk or anything like that, really think about it. You all have a little bit of time to discuss, and I hope you all discuss it very well, and I, I'm pretty sure everyone in, in the audience appreciates you all thinking about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Give us a Perez. Mayor, anybody else that has not spoken on the issue? Anybody else that wants to speak that has not spoken? What do you say, first let me give those who have not spoken and wanna speak, okay, please, on the issue. Anybody, anybody else wants to speak that has not spoken, please line up over here. I wanna give everybody the opportunity, who wants to speak?
Hello, Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is Maria Castillo. I'm from the southmost area, and I'm kind of confused, is it, you're gonna impose $2 more on the $4.50 fee that you're charging, or you're gonna take it out of there?
Take it out of there.
Okay. I think that sounds better. I'm against your passion for animals, so do I, but I think there are other alternatives the city could use. Make it a choice, you know, but this is a good idea. This is a beautiful city, it has a lot of potential, it has a lot of issues. Like in my area, a lot of streets need fixing, and they don't get fixed. The drainage problem, the homeless.
Your street got approved last week.
We're talking about La Quinta, Fiesta, Duque.
They got approved last week.
And, uh, 30th Street, southmost, the entrance there, I mean, there, it's horrible.
Ms. Castillo, there's a lot of issues, I mean, streets and stuff, I get, they're already on the list of being paved, and also there's a lot of, um, I should would say, a lot of demand and, and no funds. Some people think we have lots of funds, but we don't. So we have to prioritize, and it takes time to get to them, but we're trying.
And we need to start looking for other resources to get our funds, okay? Thank you very much.
Certainly, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Castillo. The next, please. We welcome your public comments. Anybody else who has not spoken that wants to speak, please come forward.
Mayor, Commissioners, um, I do wanna say that I, I do support the arts, I'm a, my, I'm sorry, my name is Gabriel Trevino, I'm a local artist. I do wanna say I support the arts, I support, uh, the Camille Playhouse, the Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts. Um, of course, uh, the issues with, uh, pets, with the animals and, uh, the ambulances. But, uh, I do not seem to support, uh, the tax on P U B. It doesn't seem fair, because there is more citizens that do not have that service, but yet, um, why only the P U B is, is the question that I keep on asking myself, you know, why is it only the P U B, um, customers? I am a P U B customer, and, uh, okay, let's just say that, you know what, go ahead, $2 is not, you know, like many of us say, is $2 is not, it's not a lot of money, you know, anybody can fork out $2. But, uh, my concern, or, you know, since it is being, P U B is being used as an outlet for, uh-
Collection.
For collection, and, well, would, uh, is, is the Camille Playhouse, uh, Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, will they use that as an outlet for information for the customers? Uh, when, uh, excuse me, when we receive our statements, will we see what the money's being used for in detail of, uh, a distribution, kind of, uh, and not just, well, $2 maintenance fee, but updates, monthly updates of what it's going for? And, uh, I think if, as a P U B customer, I would be, I would be happy to see, well, this $2 is going, uh, to this, you know, for, we bought, uh, you know, like, updates, monthly updates, I guess, overall, but, uh, like I said, I do support the arts, I, I wanna say that, that, you know, I'm for $2, but not, not through, through the P U B outlet. I just wanna say that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, somebody else, please? Thank you, we welcome your public comments.
Hi, I'm Carol DeMoss, Director of the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art. First, I want to thank everybody here for their insight and what you're doing for the city. I know there's a lot of agencies that want support as we do. One of the things I'd like to say is what's very important, important about what you're trying to do is it will cause a leveraging effect, a partnership with these agencies. And these agencies can leverage that, that money that's being given, so we can serve the community into grants that come in from outside of the valley into Brownsville. And can help all agencies and help all of Brownsville. And I think this type of thinking is why we've been making such great strides, and I hope it continues. The other thing I'd like to say is I've brought petitions. All of these people support the arts, we've brought copies.
Well, thank you. How many?
Anyway, we have lots of signers, we have lots of supporters, we have lots of people that would like to see all of these entities. Uh, the petition is in support of all three areas of concern. So I just wanna thank you for your insight, and thank you for keeping up the good work.
Uh, Mr. Moss.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, Mr. Moss, at this time, you receive, um, well, I guess the first question I have is the museum is currently located on, uh, public property, correct?
Yes.
But the museum itself is owned by whom?
The Brownsville Museum of Fine Art.
Okay, so you're-
It's a nonprofit organization.
No, I, okay. And you're currently receiving, um, BISD funds for children's programs and CDBG funds for children's programs, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. One of the, uh, comments was made that you were gonna provide more children funding, or programs, I should say, from these funds, correct?
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
Okay. Do you have a proposal for how you intend to use these monies?
Oh, yes, uh-huh.
Have you presented that to the city?
Um, no, we've only presented what we continue to do in our, um, uh, as far as the CDBG, yes, I've, uh, presented that. Uh, as far as the BISD, I haven't presented that proposal. I present that to BISD, but our records are open for any, for real. I'm sorry, I'm not getting the question.
And I guess my question is, is if we give you more money?
Yes.
Because that's what you're, you're, you are the representative of one of the entities that is asking for more money, correct?
Exactly, uh-huh.
Okay. And you would agree with me that there are many other museums, and there's many other entities that promote the cultural arts in our community?
Yes.
Okay. And my question to you is, has the Museum of Fine Arts come up with a proposal on how it intends to use these funds for the benefit of the community? And if you're gonna present new programs for children, are these programs going to be different than the programs that you're funding currently through CDBG money, which is essentially city money?
Yes, yes.
And BISD money?
Yes.
Okay. And have you put that in writing so that we know how these monies would be distributed?
No.
Okay.
I will be thrilled to-
So at this point, okay.
I think that's an unfair question, because I think the, the fun-
I think I've got the floor.
May I, Commissioner?
I'd really like to continue my question, because I really would like to fund-
Commissioner, one of our goals has been, if we can afford it, if we can find sponsors, we would like to let every child in the museum free of charge.
Okay, and that's another question that I have. Because a lot of the concern is that we're trying to promote the arts for underprivileged children.
Yes.
And so we'd want to make sure that if there is going to be any funding of a program, that there would be a proposal. Um, would you be in support of a cultural arts district? I believe there's currently one.
I think we already have a, that's the Mini Cultural District, uh, we are a member of the committee, and we, we are in support of that, and we are partners with that organization. Uh, we support about six thousand children, at-risk, underserved children a year, free of charge because of the grants we bring in from outside of Brownsville.
Okay. And at this point, the city is funding, are you paying utilities to the city?
Uh, no, we are receiving fifteen thousand dollars from CDBG, and that's for a satellite program we have at Southmost, uh, Library. Four days a week, and we have arts and crafts there with teachers, four days a week, and that's where it goes. Uh, we do not make money on that program. We, you know, this is, this is an indication of what we want to do. Um, the Brownsville School District gives us twelve thousand dollars a year. We have several shows for them, teacher end trainings, catalogs, and things like this, so.
Are there a lot of kids from Southmost benefiting from that thing?
Oh, yes, yes, our, our, especially right now, we've had to send additional crew that are not paid for at all out of CDBG budget to, uh, to back up our support there.
How many kids?
Oh, I wanna say four hundred. We're getting about forty a day now. Um, we're there four days a week, and then on special, special events. And we're getting ready to do, we're getting ready to talk to the library about doing a special program with, uh, digital technology. Where we received money from Texas Commission of the Arts that we want to take there.
Now, let me ask you something, if we don't, if we don't approve these two dollars, how would it affect those programs in Southmost?
Uh, those programs will no longer exist.
Well, and I guess that gets back to my question, which is, if you're gonna be asking the city for money, then I'd like to see a proposal for the use of those funds so that it's not simply given without any idea how it's gonna be used. Would you be willing to provide quarterly statements to us and show us how those monies are going to be used?
Yes, and we have, uh, we have invited the city manager to come look at our books at any time, to, uh, anything we need to do. We need a partnership with the city, we need to do our job and provide this, the community with our art. Yes, sir.
I think it's a little unfair, because, first of all, we need to pledge to give you the money for operations and maintenance and, and to grow. As a community, we are growing, but we're not evolving. Meaning that our community may grow in numbers, but we're not offering our community nothing as far as in the arts and, and, uh, plays and stuff like that. You go over to other communities, and you see that it's part of the community, and it's very vibrant, and it's also considered economic development. So the-
And those are usually funded through the hotel and motel tax.
Yep, and I know, and I think what you're trying to do is here, just, uh, put in obstacles here, because the, the thing is, if they, if you give them the money, then they can budget, depending how much money they get.
But in most other cities, what happens is-
Let me finish, Commissioner. Would you please be kind enough to let me finish? Uh, that way they can budget and, and make plans as to what activities they can, they can pro, uh, program or incorporate into their existing budget, uh, curriculum or whatever. And, and then it's up, it can, it can always be open to us to, to review, and if you're doing a bad management of the funds, we're not here to tell you how to manage your funds, at least in my point of view. We're here to give you the funds so you can grow, okay? Uh, to expand, to make sure our community is exposed to the arts. And, and educated and made part of the arts, as it should be. Because like I said, uh, we need to evolve, we can't just grow in numbers, we need to go socially and culturally. And I think that was the intent, but if the Commissioner wants, I think none of the entities would be against giving the Commissioner a detail, or you can be part of oversight of these entities if you care to do that. Or micromanaging to where you can get the books, a monthly report, uh, a quarterly report, if that's what you want. I think they'd be, I don't think they have anything to hide.
No, I don't think that's my, my point. I think my point is-
I don't think they, they're gonna, uh, misspend the money, you know, uh-
Mayor.
No, I think that what the, the position is here, is that we have the Museum of Fine Arts, we have the Children's Museum, we have the Costumes Americas, we have the Historic Brownsville Museum. We have the CFA, we've got the Camille Lightner, we've got the Zoo, we've got the Brownsville Society Performing Arts, we've got the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, which all promote tourism in the community. We've also got the Brownsville Historic Association, we've got the Stillman House, and we've got the Brownsville Heritage Museum. And all of these entities promote Brownsville. And all of these entities would like to be able to participate in funding. And I think that if we look at other communities such as Westlaco, McAllen, San Antonio, San Benito, they have a cultural arts department where people can submit proposals for funding, and those people can then get grants from the city based on the proposal. They can get matching funds, they can apply to the Texas, uh, uh, center, uh, the TSC, and they can get more funds there, and they can actually qualify for federal funds as well, depending on the quality of the grant writing. So there are funds available, and there are ways of doing it, and most of these organizations are also, uh, paid for through the hotel and motel tax instead of through PUB or Public Utilities Bills. And that's kind of my concern, is that why don't we lump this together, where we can have people participate, and we can see which are the best programs to fund? And if we've already got something that overlaps, well, then we should acknowledge that. And I think that the Museum of Fine Arts is a wonderful organization, I think that it needs to be promoted. And I think anything that we do where we're on a limited budget, we're going through a budgeting system here, uh, of meetings, and Pete Gonzalez has said that we have restricted funds. If we're gonna turn over monies to somebody, whoever it may be, whether it's the fire department, whether it is the animal shelter, whoever it may be, that we need to know how those funds are gonna be used, so that we can best serve the community. And obviously, we wanna promote the Museum of Fine Arts, obviously wanna promote any of these other entities, including the Camille Lightner Playhouse. But what I'd like to see is a proposal on how, how the monies are gonna be used before I, I vote to distribute those funds. Just like when you buy a car, you sit there and say, "This is the car I want, and this is where I'm gonna pay for it." It's that simple.
And Mayor and Commissioners, um-
Let, let, let's lift the speaker.
Let me, let me make a comment. Um, I agree with what Commissioner Triony's saying, Ms. DeMoss. And all we're asking is that, if you're gonna ask for additional monies, then we'd like to see where it's gonna be spent. Nobody's saying that, that, um, we wanna know exactly, uh, where you're gonna apply the money, but just to see where you're gonna spend it. And I think that's, makes it fair for all.
A kind of idea is what we're looking for, and a quarterly report to me will suffice. Let me tell you something, you're, you're, you put this on agenda, and it talks not just about Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts, it's the multicultural district. Right? If we're gonna approve this two dollars, can it go to a multicultural district? They're changing it to where it does include all the arts. I, I, the Commissioner's right. And first of all, this, let me tell you something. As Mayor, I have an obligation, okay? Because I come in contact with so many people, I'm exposed to so much, much more than the average citizen. And I pick up what is needed out there. And as Mayor, I have an obligation to bring back, try and find solutions to it. And this is a solution that was proposed to the table, and at that time, I welcome everybody in the commission, that if they had a better alternative, to bring it. So far, they haven't.
I did, I thought it was voluntary.
Let me finish. But Commissioner, uh, Triony, if you wanna be the chairman of the committee to oversee all these entities you mentioned, and find funding for them, I'll appoint you the chairman. You have, you have all these great ideas, you're the chairman. You find the funding for them, okay? Okay, but in the meantime, we're talking about two dollars right now for these three entities that I brought, to look for, there's others. I, I, I'm, I'm gonna propose a solution for the zoo, for the children's. I'm looking for different ways to, to, to meet those needs instead of ignoring them. Because we can easily sit here and put obstacles, we can easily here, sit here and give lip service, we can easily sit here and just be status quo. We need to move forward, we need to find a way to where we evolve as a community, and offer our children something to do, and grow spiritually and also culturally.
Uh, one thing I wanna point out is we're talking about the other entities, and, and I respect all of them. If you'll notice, some of the directors from the other entities signed our petition in support of us. They know it's needed, they know this is something that's happening, this is coming. It's going to be good for all of us. And we're delighted you started with us and the Camille Playhouse. But our, our people, that people would think are our competitors, they signed the petition for us, because they believe in this so strongly. And I don't think anything speaks more than that. And, uh, this is very necessary, it's very needed, it's an immediate need for some of these entities.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
The, the way he's proposing this two dollars out of the four fifty to go to the Mini Cultural District, and it goes to all y'all, would, does that help you all, or does it hurt y'all?
What happens is, is the, where the Mayor has proposed it, where it goes to these entities, it helps. If we try to do everybody at one time, everybody loses. If we cut the pie into so many sections, it won't work.
It won't work.
It won't work, unfortunately.
Everybody knows that, everybody knows that.
And that's what, that's what the, you know.
You know, and I wanna, I wanna make a comment about what I've heard today, when, when the public's been speaking. Uh, and I think Commissioner Triony made the motion the last time, and I seconded it, and it died on his commission, to have it voluntary. You know, I, I would volunteer to pay the two dollars. Um, that was brought up to the table, uh, was voted on, Commissioner Triony brought it up, I seconded it, I think Commissioner Edward Camarillo voted in favor of it. And it was turned down. I think that that's a great idea, I've been hearing that a lot from a lot of people. I think that that might have to be brought up. Because I don't know, we, if, if people know, that the four dollars and, the four fifty for the maintenance fee, it's currently being used, or it's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, to Public Works. See, we need to understand that, um, the consequences for our actions. If we take two dollars from the four fifty, is, that's gonna hurt our Public Works, is that correct, Triony? Okay, so, a lot of people don't realize that, they think that, they don't know where the money's going to.
But, but we have a-
Pete, you can, uh, show us, right?
But we're gonna correct that, Commissioner.
Where the four fifty is being applied?
Commissioner, we're gonna correct that when we do budget proceedings, okay?
We're in the budget proceedings right now.
We can make the adjustments. Not everybody at one time, not everybody at one time. Uh, we can make those adjustments.
I think Ms. DeMoss might wanna be excused, I mean, we really appreciate your time, we don't wanna keep you up here for us to argue over this.
That, that's fine, uh, and we will be glad to provide any reports, we like to brag about what we're doing.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and for, let me explain, let me explain something. Uh, what, what Commissioner, what Commissioner Zanella said, uh, you know, he, he, there's a, there's, there's truth to that. But there's two proposals here, and, 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 you know, it's not just one, so there's two proposals, so y'all have, whatever the commission feels comfortable with. I asked the commission to bring alternatives, and we welcome, uh, Commissioner Lula Arce's alternative. So, you know, it's good. Uh, Mr. Resendez, please come up. We took up the time, Mr. Resendez.
Este, well, on, on that, uh, service fee. On the service fee, I have a lot of people that, that call me, and we talk, uh, I belong to different groups. And, uh, most of the people don't know what the service fee that you all are charging, which is four fifty, they, they actually do not know. I don't know myself exactly, I just heard right now that it's for the-
Public Works, it's being used at Public Works.
Okay, uh, I understand that Mr. Garza has been, uh, trying to promote, or trying to say something about that, uh, to get the two dollars out of the service fee. The service fee is bringing you all about, uh, two million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand. That's what I feel, I could be wrong, a year. Two million, three, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, or maybe more, I don't know. Uh, and, and, and the Brownsville Herald, the Brownsville Herald and the people of Brownsville, I, I'm pretty sure that about ninety percent of them don't know where the service fee is going, ¿me entiendes? Now, Mr. Garza, he, he proposed that maybe you all can get the two dollars from there. I would appreciate it if you don't get it from the, from, from the peoples, because two, uh, two million dollars plus another, uh, maybe another million dollars, or eighty-eight thousand, which is eighty-eight thousand, uh, you got forty-four thousand, uh, payers for P, from PUB. And, and, and for two dollars, that would be eighty-eight thousand a month. So, uh, another million dollars added to that, I, I, I think you all could bring, uh, at least two or three more ambulances, so you could help us when, when we need the ambulances, you know? Uh, with all due respect to Mr. O'Malley, I know he's trying to do things, you know? Uh, I don't agree too much on, on the animals, I mean, I have animals myself, you know, but I take care of them. I feed them, and I take care of them, you know, and they cost me money, you know, they cost me money. Pero, este, okay, you all do whatever you have to do, I mean, I understand that Mr. O'Malley has, uh, Mr. Longoria and, and Mr. Atkins on, on his side, because they always vote on his side, you know? And, 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 and there's two other guys that are, they're always abstaining. Mr. Camarillo, he's smiling, but he abstaining, you know? I feel that if you wanna abstain, why don't you just stay home and call, "I'm gonna abstain," you know? And, and, and tell the voters that voted for you all, you know? Mr. Camarillo, and, and, and my friend, I voted for you all, I helped you all, I backed you all a hundred percent, you know?
Ellis, you're out of order.
People call me. I'm out of order.
Mr. Resen, Mr. Resen-
But I'm sorry.
Let, let me ask you a question.
Let Mr. Longoria tell me why I'm out of order.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Resendez. Mr. Resen, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Um, there's a need here, obviously, I mean, the, the, the arts are having a very difficult time.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, just go there yourself and find out, but, uh, they're having a very difficult time. Um, the state also mandated that in case we have a hurricane, uh, the, we have to evacuate the owners with their pets. We can't leave them behind.
Yeah, I understand it.
It's a law, it's a law.
Sure, sure.
And there's no funding, okay? And also the, the danger of having a health hazard, because there's so many pets running loose.
Sure, 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 okay.
Uh, we need to educate our people, because it's a culture problem. About spay, neutering, vaccination, keeping their pets, like yourself, being a responsible pet owner, keep them in there, okay? And again, also, because another health issue, we get, uh, let's say, a disaster hurricane, and we have all these pets, dead, dead carcasses out there, that's gonna create another health, health problem. There's so many reasons why, there's need, the, the need is there. This is not just about pets. This is about the arts, public safety, and pets, okay? So, but the need is there, okay? You believe, I'm sure you agree the need is there, but you just don't wanna fund it under any circumstances.
No, no, I do, I do, I do, I do.
How would you propose that we fund it?
Very, very easy.
How?
You have two persons that abstained.
Uh-huh.
And if the people vote, we're in America. We don't, we're not a dictatorship that one person votes and, and, and you pass it.
So you'll abide by whatever the vote is?
Exactly. If the people vote that they want it, I'm a hundred percent for you all.
Okay, thank you.
But if the people say, "Hey, we wanna know where this money's going to," okay?
That can easily be done.
So do you agree that a voluntary would be a good idea?
Yes, why not? Sure. I, I might even say, "Okay, I'll pay it, why not?" Maybe I can pay it.
But you're saying is, vote on it, let the people know where you stand, one way or the other, and you'll, and you'll respect whatever the vote is.
Exactly. I cannot respect when the people are getting billed for three million dollars, okay, and they don't know where the money's going to. okay, and they don't know where the money's going to?
Mr. Resendez.
We, we got twenty million dollars in the water port that got lost, not even a brick.
You, you answered my question, thank you.
Mr. Resendez, you called, you called me a couple of times, and we spoke about this issue.
Yes, sir.
And I explained it to you.
Yes, I thought it was good.
You said it was a good idea?
Yeah, yeah, but this, this gentleman right here said that, that, that it's gonna go from, you, you're gonna get it out of the...
Which gentleman, Mr. Kabbler?
Yeah, Mr. Kabbler.
Or Mr. Gonzalez?
No, no, Mr. Kabbler just said that that goes through the funds of the streets or something.
For Public Works.
Public Works.
Okay.
But it goes to general fund, and from there, they fund, okay?
That, that's why we're gonna go and look at the budget, and we're gonna have budget proceedings, and we, we're gonna make the adjustments.
I want you all to do the right thing, ¿entiendes? I don't wanna make it from there.
We, we will make adjustments.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Resendez, appreciate, and appreciate your candida that you want us to go.
But you do know you did not give me as much time as that lady, eh? You do know that, right?
Thank you, sir.
And that's a violation of my laws.
You have to reserve for next time.
I would like to know what Mr., why Mr. Longoria said that I was out of order.
That's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you so much, take care.
That's weird.
Thank you very much, Mr. Resendez. God bless you. Okay, Ms. Laney? Put the mic a little closer to you, so it can be heard, please.
Hi, Ms. Laney, I'm with the Brownsville Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. I, first of all, want to thank you all for, um, approving the no-kill policy for the shelter. I think this was a milestone for Brownsville, and there's been some criticism, but there's also been an awful lot of praise for you guys. Some people have referred to it as a miracle, and I wanna thank you for making that miracle happen. Uh, in order to continue that miracle, I think we do need some funding, maybe more than we have now, and I thank you for, in the past, approving the additional money for, um, animal care, the animal shelter. Um, there is a great need, I think, for more money, we want to finish the clinic, and already construction has started on that, to finish it out. Uh, we'd like to see a veterinarian there, and I think some discussion is underway on that as well. Uh, we need more medical care for animals that are being housed there, some get sick and die just because there's, there's no medicine available, uh, and if we had veterinary care available there, I think a lot more would survive. Um, the shelter is not jam-packed, contrary to what the media has reported in some cases. One animal is being held per kennel in most cases. Uh, it's true, there's not a lot of extras available, I was there on Friday, I saw two. I have been there in the past and seen as many as twenty, but I know that's just because euthanasias have just been done. Uh, we're hearing about reports of stray animals on the streets, well, we've had stray animals on the streets ever since I've lived in Brownsville, and I moved here in nineteen eighty. Um, we need to make this work, and we need more money. Um, part of the solution is to spay and neuter, to reduce the population, to reduce the pet overpopulation through spays and neuters. Uh, but would be nice if people would just voluntarily not let their animals breed. Um, there are many things we can work on, and we're trying to do that, we're trying to promote adoptions. The mayor has been at the flea markets on the weekends, along with some others of us trying to promote adoptions, and we've had a lot of people come through, most of them don't even know where the animal shelter is. Does not have a visible sign, it's not visible from the expressway. We need to do a better job of promoting the shelter. We finally have a beautiful new shelter, and it took fifteen years to get that shelter since the bond issue was passed to raise money for it. But I, I encourage you to continue to support the efforts. Um, I hope that you will approve the funding, whether it's out of the maintenance fee or an additional fund, and I thank you for your support so far, and I hope you will continue it.
Ms. Laney, um, if this is not approved, what's gonna happen to your efforts? To the organization's efforts? But what will happen?
Um, I think animals will continue to die unnecessarily.
We'll go back to killing seven thousand pets a year, instead of, instead of adopting...
If the moratorium fails, yes, I think that'll happen, and, and we're not even sure that's an accurate figure, that's a figure that I think you quoted in your campaign literature.
I got it from the city. Uh, but also, immediately, if, if, if this doesn't pass, we can, we can hire a vet that we need in-house in order to spay, neuter, and educate people, and make it affordable for people to adopt, is that right?
That's right.
So that's a, a key issue right there alone.
And let me remind you that there is a link between animal abuse and human abuse, where you see one, you quite frequently see the, the other, and there is an organization in the valley dedicated just to that purpose, meets once a month. Please think about that.
Ma'am, with your organization as well, have you submitted a proposal as to how you're gonna use the funds if you're actually funded by the city commission?
Okay, that's, let me clear that up. The B S P C A is not a part of the city.
Well, I understand that, but you're asking for city funds, so I'm asking, have you presented a proposal?
The city will be in charge of these funds, Charlie Kabbler will be in charge of these funds.
We're a volunteer group, we try to help...
It's all volunteer.
Okay.
We're, we don't administer the funds, we do our own fundraising to try to care for animals as well, but we don't get money from the city.
Thank you.
This funding will be strictly under the city managers.
Uh, I, I have something to say to that effect, uh, Mr. Mayor, when I make my motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Laney. Laura, please come forward.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Laura Snyder, and I'm also from the B S P C A. I'm definitely in favor of the charge of the two dollars, originally it was gonna be three, and, uh, well, three dollars, it meant, originally meant ten cents a day. And ten cents a day, I mean, let me remind you of the words of some people, I was here in one of the meetings, and they said, "Well, if people, regardless of their income, fixed income, but nowadays, everybody has a cellphone, everybody, well, not everybody, but a lot of people smoke, a lot of people drink, and if they can do that, I think they can afford to invest, because actually, the current, uh, two dollars is, if we take it as an investment, our city is growing, and it's a beautiful city, and if we take it as an investment, the two dollars, well, those two dollars are gonna go to three ma, very great, wonderful projects, and these projects are gonna give fruit, I mean, they're gonna be very redituales, I mean, they're gonna be very, very prosperous, and they're gonna give more income, and are gonna, gonna attract tourists to the city with this, the museum, and, well, that's one, um, that's one thing that is gonna attract tourists to the, to the city. But one thing that is badly needed, are ambulances, definitely, and education, uh, for the people to care for animals. The things that you are doing and have approved so far about, uh, the shelter are great, and let me congratulate all of you, I think it's great what you have done, but I think we can do more. I think we need, regardless of where the funds come, they're not gonna call, uh, uh, fall from heaven, definitely, so they need to come from somewhere. I'm not the expert about, uh, budgets, I'm not, uh, I think you have more knowledge of where, where those funds are, uh, the most convenient way to come, to, for them to come from, but definitely, please don't forget about these projects. The animals also need a lot of support, and not only the animals, which are, are beloved, they depend totally enough, and they give us their friendship unconditionally, but not only that, I mean, it's for also education of the children. The children need to grow with the image, a different image, not of pets, uh, I mean, dogs or cats, running all over the place, losing the city, covered with mange, unfortunately sometimes, or they were run over, or, uh, sick, or starving to death, I mean, that's not a clear image, that's not a healthy image for children growing. Definitely, we need to do something, and, uh, you started, and you are doing great, but like I said, I think we need to keep working, and this miracle, this, that is happening, is not gonna happen, like I said, from, with no funds. We need to keep working, and I go for it. I think seven cents a day, which is a two dollars a month, forty-four thousand, uh, houses, I mean, what, what is that? It's nothing for an investment, it's gonna give us an improvement to the city, it's gonna give us hell, healthier city, and definitely, like I said, the animals need our help, they are our most unconditional friends, they need us, and we need definitely to take care of them, we need a healthier city in, in that respect.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Roy? And then we're gonna cut it off at Mr. Reese, uh, I'm gonna give you a little extra time, Mr. Reese.
Uh, good evening, I'm Mr. Roy Gonzalez, and mayor, commissioners. I think the main issue is how to appropriate the two dollars. Um, we've got an entity called P U B, I think that's fine, but have we solicited Magic Valley, C P N L, all of these entities that use, uh, our, our lines, our poles, our, you know, they exchange with P U B, you know, one neighbor that I have is C P N L, and I'm P U B. I'll be paying it.
If we could do that, Roy, we would be doing it with the area maintenance fee.
Well, what, my, my suggestion is, this two dollars can be negotiated, I know John Ireda was Magic Valley, and he lives in Brownsville.
Right.
And he is a super, super guy. If we could have our city manager contact this guy and sit down and say, "Hey, look, we're doing it with P U B", this would encompass everybody that lives in Brownsville, and it stopped this thing, and we'd get our two dollars, and you can use it whatever you want.
Okay, and Roy...
So, that was, that's my suggestion, that you need somebody to sit down and negotiate with these people, uh, and you guys, uh, obviously have the talent to do so, or appoint someone, because all it takes is for them to say, "Okay, this two dollars at P U B, we need for you to do the same thing to our customers that live in Brownsville, take those two dollars and, and put it in there, and you can do it voluntarily, you know, 'cause then you have a mass, and then it can be voluntarily. You can do it voluntarily with just P U B, okay? 'Cause it won't serve our purpose.
Roy, I spoke, I spoke at a, a rotary with, where Mr. Ireda was at, and he indicated they wouldn't do it, but, but let's say, let's say he would do it, or, or he doesn't do it, C P N L, uh, would you be against the two dollars, ir-respect what they do it, would you be against it?
Well, you know, again, you know, again, you, you know, you're putting the burden on forty-four thousand people, you know, and i- is, is that fair? You know, is my neighbor, my neighbor's C P N L, and we live on, I live on Draper Drive, so consequently, and you're my commissioner, right? Consequently, you know, I feel that I'm, I'm being burdened, and he, you know, is, is scot-free.
What, what about the suggestion that Mr. Francisco Gonzalez made, that, that, uh, you have the option to write a letter and say, "I don't wanna be on there"? Would that be okay?
Well, that's a, that's an option that will, you know, ultimately come from you guys.
But would that be okay with you, though?
Sure, because, but it's the same thing as voluntary.
But I mean, let me ask you, would that be okay with you, the two dollars would then be okay with you?
Well, sure, you know, then you find out who really, but I mean, if you really want the, the funds that we really need for the arts and, and the different entities for EMS, by the way, the first EMS, EMS ambulances was actually solicited by yours truly, with each bank that was in Brownsville, and that was brought in here back in the eighties. So, um, I, being involved with the community all, all this time, uh, the arts, so Umberto Festival's an art, by the way, and so is Charo Days, uh, and we don't solicit directly from the city, but I think you need to include, the inclusion of everybody is more important than just the forty-four thousand people, that's why the, that's why you're having a lot of negative, is, because you're also...
You're putting the burden on forty-four thousand people, and you don't want that. The other side of the coin is, uh, to raise taxes, would you support raise taxes to fund all these programs that we talked about here?
Well, you know, tax, that's an issue that everybody's real sensitive to, you know...
Okay, so you wouldn't raise, you wouldn't, you wouldn't support that, okay? And let me ask you this, um, if, if, um, if you look at it from the other point of view is that, yes, you're only targeting, uh, certain market, P U B, okay? Because that's the easiest one to collect, right?
Sure.
Just like the area maintenance fee. But you're targeting also renters who don't pay property taxes, so they contribute something back to, to the, to the community, okay? They contribute something back to the community, which they normally don't because they're not property taxpayers, don't you think that's evening the playing field a little bit, and maybe making up for the fact that, that, uh, uh, we're not targeting those outside the P U B, uh?
I think, I think what we need to target is the entities that need funding, that's our target. Our target is to serve these entities, and, and in order for be, these entities to be equitable for everybody, you need to see if you can get to Magic Valley and C P N L. And, and then, and everybody would be inclusive, and then, then you could make it a choice, then you can make it volunteer, or a letter saying, "Look, I, you know, I don't wanna give you two bucks, man",
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, I appreciate your comments, thank you very much. Okay, uh, Mr. Reese? Really?
The persons here, uh, commissioners and mayor, we are talking about two dollars. The future of your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren have been compromised by the federal government. In government, we have the federal, we have the state, county, and city. Here we have a mayor that comes up, and look at the people that he has brought here today. This is beautiful, this is what government is about, this is what the process is about, to you participate, to hold them accountable, and that's what it's, government is about.
Thank you.
I salute the mayor and, and also the commissioners, because it takes a team to get things done, and, and, and what gets things done and started, and, and to develop our ideas. The idea that the mayor brought up is something that has to be emotional, and you have to be concerned about. I wish that someone here listening to me can donate some land, and I, sir, will offer my services free, gratis, to develop a place where dogs and cats and animals can call their home, for free, I'll do that for free.
Thank you, thank you.
And we have to understand...
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
We need all of you to come back again, to participate, because this is what closes the circle, accountability. After you vote, your candidates in, the people you selected, then you have to hold them accountable. And you do that by attending the meeting, and coming with them, and, and celebrating this thing so beautiful, that's called government, which we are.
Thank you, Mr. Reese, thank you. Uh, you know, Mr. Reese made a point, that, you know, you know, it's not easy to be a leader. A leader have to give directions at the pace, and sometimes, there's people who don't wanna follow, because they'd rather be leaders, and yet, you know, everybody has that opportunity to do that, and I welcome them as leaders to bring solutions to the problem. If they don't have a solution, then we should look and unite to, to, to make it better, because if it's better, if it's good for Brownsville, if it solves a problem, and everybody's gonna benefit from it, we should unite and make it better for Brownsville. We raised the issue, the fact that the issue's being debated is healthy, okay? We may not agree, but at least the awareness has been raised in the community to make you aware of the problems that we're facing, and have to make decisions on. But I welcome everybody, everybody to, to offer alternatives, and if they have a better one, uh, I'm, I'm willing to entertain it. Leo here brought this alternative, and it's gonna be voted on, uh, but at this time, I would like to close the public hearing, uh, thank everybody for, for, for speaking out.
Gonzalez, come up.
Pardon me?
We have Pete Gonzalez from there.
Sure, okay, that'd be good.
And have him kinda tell us...
Mr. Gonzalez, okay?
I, I was gonna ask that.
Thank you.
Let Mr. Gonzalez come up.
Mr. Gonzalez, you wanna speak here? Okay.
Loaded question.
Let, let, may I, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, you and I spoke about this issue at length, I believe, and, uh, my question to you was, if, if, if my proposal passes, with your, and first of all, let me say, let me commend you, you, you're the best thing that's ever happened to the city of Brownsville, you're a great finance director. Thank you for your service. If, if, uh, if this, um, if we take two dollars out of the four fifty that we have been collecting for twenty years, and if we wait until October first, when the fiscal year begins, that's gonna give you and us and the whole staff, Mr. Kabbler, all of us, an opportunity to that's going to give you and us and the whole staff, Mr. Kaplan, all of us, an opportunity to sit with you and look at the budget for two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and we can make some adjustments. People were saying that if we take two dollars out of the four fifty, it's going to affect the Public Works. Um, I had a, a citizen that called me this morning and said, Mr. Garcia, I understand that, uh, the four fifty is for street sweepers. Says, I've never seen a street sweeper in my neighborhood. Now, I don't know how many we have. Maybe we have two, three or four. But we have, in twenty years, collected a lot of money, four fifty per P U B customer. And, uh, you have the numbers and I respect you and, uh, but can you tell me if we assign, if this passes and we assign that responsibility to you, and I am asking, Mr. Mayor, that that responsibility be imposed on Mr. Gonzalez and not Mr. Kaplan, with all the respect to Mr. Kaplan. Mr. Kaplan is a great city manager. He's not our finance director. Mr. Pete Gonzalez is our finance director. And, uh, so, what, what is your, uh, recommendation?
Uh, thank you for your comments earlier, Commissioner. Uh, I don't know, Mayor, members of the city commission. Guess my comment is that we start the first public hearing on the fiscal year two thousand eight budget next Tuesday. That's August seventh. The budget that will be presented to you next week includes all the requests that each department has made to us. And in that budget that we will present to you next week will include the proposed tax rate. Uh, we received the, the tax roll from the appraisal district, uh, la- late last week. We are getting ready to figure out what our tax rate will be. Last year when we did our tax rate, we, because of the increased valuations that we had, uh, that we, that we actually gained last year, we actually reduced the tax rate by three cents.
Are you proposing a tax rate increase?
We were following, Mayor, we were following the truth and in taxation laws in, that, that exists here in Texas. And, uh, by following those laws, we were able to reduce the tax rate by, by three cents from sixty-eight cents to sixty-five cents. Um, based on what is written on the truth, truth in taxation laws.
And against your recommendation?
We would definitely like, see, Commissioner-
You, 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 they were, was, not you. The tax rate was reduced, okay, against your recommendation. Wait a second, wait a second, it was against your recommendation. Well, you knew there was going to be some things coming further down the road that would be needed, the three cents. I mean, you're the finance director, you knew this, right?
I, I would, I would have preferred to have gone with the sixty-eight cents, but let me, let me tell you about-
So let me tell you, let me tell you what this was. This was grandstanding.
Mayor.
Cutting the tax rate for very short period of time.
We were, we were, we had a healthy reserve, we had a healthy budget. Mr. Pete Gonzalez is the finance director and he always recommends to raise, right?
Yeah, but we dipped into reserves to balance the budget. We dipped into reserves to balance the budget.
About three hundred thousand.
Well, so I mean, you know, what was so great about that?
Budgets are estimates. When you have your final figures at the end of the year, we came up with a better number. Uh, keeping, you weren't here last, last week, Mayor, and Commissioner Longoria wasn't here last week. We went over the, the financials for the quarter ending June thirtieth. Uh, we also went into the budget for two thousand seven. And we also explained to you the monies that the city receives through sales tax, property tax, fees and services.
I read the report.
All, all of that that comes in. When you prepare a budget, and I mentioned that to you last week, is that one of the, the major revenue source for the city is the sales tax.
It's on the increase.
And sales tax, I've seen years, Mayor, where our sales tax went down thirty-four percent. And that was when, I don't think we're going to see those years, uh, again, but that was in the early eighties when we had that major passive evaluation. It took us seven years to recover from eighty-two all the way through, uh, eighty-nine, seven years to recover. So I have seen that before in the past that, and, and right now, sales tax has been strong and we-
The hotel motel tax and the sales tax, there's a slight increase.
We are always hoping that we have a strong economy that will increase our revenues, especially sales tax, because that's our, our number one revenue source. Uh, but when we look at the budget, that's one of the things that we, we look at. We want to make sure that we have enough funds and yes, Mayor, you're right. When we prepare a budget, we estimate very conservatively. And again, because of those numbers that we don't know of, we don't know what municipal court is going to collect, Mayor. And that's a number that we use historical information. We go into, into the past and then look at what we received here and then we calculate more or less how much we're going to collect, but there, that is not a guaranteed revenue source. The only guaranteed revenue source that really that the city has is the property tax. You know you're going to collect that property tax. Sales tax, we monitor this on a monthly basis to make sure that we're within the budget estimates. Municipal court fines, and I'm using municipal court fines because I'm looking at the major, major revenue funds that the city has. Uh, uh, so if the, uh, for instance, municipal court could be down from one year to the next. It depends on how many citations and also you need to look at the, at the judges, whether or not they'll be able to, to fine the, the, the people. But again, it depends on the, on, on, on the citations that are issued. So that's the reason why when we present a budget to you, we want to be as conservative as much as we can, because we don't want to come in at mid-year and say, Mayor and Commissioners, we are, we have a huge deficit coming up. We need to do, we need to act. We need to reduce costs. So yes, the budget that was approved last year had more expenses than revenues. But every year, like I, like I mentioned to you last, last week, it has been proven that every time we do this, we're, 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 we're better off because we are able to maintain the adequate reserves that the city needs to maintain. Um, and that's one area that we have been able to accomplish the last fifteen, ten years, ten, fifteen years. That we have enough reserves on hand in case of a major catastrophe such as a hurricane. A hurricane can, can wipe out your reserves.
So we've been able to keep it at fifteen percent?
We, we, we try to keep it at fifteen percent. The budget right now that we have, Mayor, and again, it's very conservative, it's around twelve percent. We know very well that we're going to be about the fifteen percent at the end of the year. But going back to what I, I guess what I, what I emphasize is that we have our first public hearing on the budget next week, Tuesday. Here, we're going to present to you all the requests that have come in from the departments. And believe me, we are not going to be able to fund every request that they have. We're looking at more police officers, more firefighters, and I mentioned those, more EMS people that we were probably not going to be able to, to, to fund because we, we did more revenue, uh, sources. Um, to answer, I guess, Commissioner Garcia's question is, I, I, it's, it's fine the way you're, but I would rather wait on Commissioner, with all due respect, so that you can see next week's budget.
But you are fine with my proposal.
If we can find another revenue source to replace that loss.
Leo, Leo, this is your first budget. You haven't been through a budget yet. Listen to what he has to say. I can tell you that by taking these two dollars out of the four fifty, look, the four fifty have been there. This is what keeps us from raising taxes. This is what keeps us from having to dig money into the general fund. This four fifty is what keeps David Ivory and before him, Carlos Ayala, from, from having to come to us for more money. This is how we survive at Public Works, by getting streets and projects done. Give, learn your first budget. Come, sit at the meeting, listen to the budget and see the effects that it'll have, Leo, because I don't want you to come up for reelection and have to raise people's taxes and that's going to be very unpopular for you and you're not going to get reelected. That's what's going to happen, my friend, because that's where we're headed. If we take these two dollars out of that four fifty, that's what's going to happen.
I'm not worried about being reelected. I'm, I'm, I want to do what's right for the city of Brownsville and, and thank you for your comment.
You're not going to, you're not going to do it by raising taxes, Leo?
I, I'm not worried about being reelected. I want to do what's right. And, um, you know, I, I want to take care of, of, of ambulances, you know? My proposal is that we take two dollars out of the four fifty and for the purchase of, uh, uh, ambulances or equipment utilized by emergency medical services, the animal shelter operations for the purpose of pro- improving quality care for the animals and also for the general operation of the cultural heritage and fine arts and that, uh, uh, you manage this money and, and, you know, take into account the monies that these, uh, entities or departments are already receiving from, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, be, what is it, G-BAC or, uh, all these, uh, hotel and motel taxes, okay? And, um, so I'm not worried about reelection. I'm worried about doing what's right right now and I want to get more equipment for those ambulances. We have twelve ambulances. Only six are in operation. Of the six, one ambulance does not have air conditioning in the back. The other six ambulances are sitting there because it doesn't have proper equipment and we don't have the personnel. So there's nothing wrong with taking two dollars out of the four fifty and, and what Commissioner Torriani said, taking from Paul to give to Mary. I don't agree with that. What, we will have those budget hearings and yes, I'm a rookie and I haven't looked at the budget, but I know we're going from a hundred and five million to a hundred and twenty-five million and, you know, we're going to have to get the money from somewhere. So that's something else. I, my proposal is that this, if approved, goes into effect October the first, the new fiscal year. It'll give you time, Mr. Gonzalez, and us to look at the budget like, like Commissioner Longoria is saying and make adjustments.
Thank you.
But Commissioner, Commissioner, if I may, real quick, by proposing this though, you are aware that we will be taking from Public Works? We're going to make adjustments. We're not going to do it now. We're going to do it the beginning of the fiscal year, October first. So we're, it's not going to affect Public Works.
You're not, you're missing the concept. You're missing, you're totally missing the concept.
Well, that's your opinion, Commissioner. Thank you.
It's not an opinion. It's a, it's a straight fact. You have the financial director here telling you.
Said he was fine with my proposal.
Director comments to made, undirected personally.
Well, anyway, are you fine?
Let's keep it, let's keep it, uh, on the issue, let's focus on the issue, whether to take the two dollars out of the four fifty, out of the area maintenance fee or not.
Mayor, I have a comment.
First of all, let, let me, let me make this comment because our finance director knows better than anybody that I've been through, through this before. I inherited a one-point-three million dollar deficit. And I'm the one that introduced a resolution on building up the fund balances, if you recall, when we had nothing. We were in the red. And I'm the one who introduced the three dollars for the area maintenance fee that, that was grown into four fifty. So I've been here. I know how it affects the budget. I know where we were at. I know how we dealt with, uh, being in the red. I know how it was that we couldn't sell bonds to build a library. We made it happen. Do you agree with what I'm saying? Okay, so you know, we've made it happen, okay?
But we haven't been in the red, right?
The Commissioner here has put a proposal on the table. It's been discussed and if it fails, we have another alternative, the other one. But he has come forward and put a proposal here for consideration. I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on, Mayor, I'm not done, Mayor.
I still move. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I request to be recognized, Mayor. Can you recognize me? I, I asked you before and I'm signaling to you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you.
Okay, thank you. You know, Commissioner Gonzalez, I, I, I really understand what you're trying to do and where you're trying to come from. We are rushing the process. We are rushing the process before we even know what's really there and what's not there. Do we want to help everybody? Yes, we do. Can we help more than what we're saying? We may be able to help more once we review what we're doing. We can't jump in. We can't be shooting from the hip. And some of these things have come up. We're shooting from the hip. And that's not the right direction. And so I, I, I just want to go on record stating that. There is probably a better way to do it. And again, we've been rushed thinking, well, there's a quorum. No, there's no quorum. We spend time in, in dealing with all these, you know, illegalities without thinking of the real issue of how we're going to solve it.
But, Mr. Camarillo, I'm glad you're bringing that up. I'm, for instance, one of the issues is, of course, you're talking about public safety, you're talking about the arts and you're talking about, uh, um, uh, the, um, the, the pets and all that. You're on the, um, animal committee, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've been on the animal committee how long?
I was appointed by Mayor Trevino at the time.
How long ago was that? Four years ago?
No, I was elected four years ago, um.
Okay, how long?
Probably about a year, or a year or so.
Okay, in that year, you haven't come up with a plan to deal with the problems there at the animal shelter? I mean, your committee, I'm not saying you, I'm saying your committee. Your committee has not discussed or come up with a plan to deal with the problems. Have they, have they? Have they proposed a plan?
In terms of budget, budget monies?
Budget or, I mean, have they proposed a plan to deal with the problems? Have they proposed a plan? I mean, they had a year there that you've been there. I don't know what's happened before, but have they done anything to make it better?
As ex-official of the committee, Mayor, we have not looked at items that need to go before this commission to move and help the animal shelter. And I, I will, I will respond and by saying that, meeting with, after meeting with Mr. Trevino, who brought a list of four pages long of issues at the animal shelter. A lot of those issues, if they've been brought to our attention, can be addressed. A lot of them are funding mechanisms. And when we look at our budget and when we're constantly telling departments, they come and they call me and they say, well, you know what, I need X, Y and Z. And then we're told, well, you know what, in order for you to get X, Y and Z, this is what you'd have to do to property taxes to help give them and every other department what they'd request. So it's not a simple solution for the group to think, well, okay, you're asking me for X, I'm going to give it to you. I wish, I wish I had the magic wand to be able to do that.
Commissioner, I challenge you. You're on that committee. It's a good committee. Go back to the committee, see if you can deal with the problems.
I look, I look forward, I look forward to working with the commissioner.
Can I have a motion to close it?
Uh, Mayor, one more thing, uh-
Hold on, if I may, wait a second. Wait, Mayor, real quick, just, uh, Pete, I did talk to you and Charlie, I talked to you, uh, I will not be able to be here on August seventh. So send me all that information. I told you, right, Pete? We talked about that. Send me the information for the budget. I can study it. Thank you. I just have one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Please. We haven't done, and I say we because I'm a citizen and I'm, I'm a new city commissioner, so I, I've, we haven't done anything in twenty years. It's all been going to Public Works and that's great. But I think it's high time that we do something now and this is the time to do it. We can make those-
We haven't done anything in twenty years.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, the, the issue, the issue here is that the four fifty, uh, forgive me for making that statement. I withdraw it. The issue here is the four fifty has been going to Public Works for twenty years. I'm, you know, I'm sure they've done a lot of good stuff, a lot of good work.
They've done a lot, yes.
Yes, they have. But it's time that we take, take action on this item and, and get those ambulances, you know?
Okay, let's have a vote, let's have a vote now.
Pete, real quick question.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Torriani has made some motion to close the public hearing? Can I have a second by Mr. Sisnetos? Okay, we have a motion, uh, close the public hearing. We have, this is an action item. Uh, can I have a motion to, uh, for or against?
I've got a motion to make. I would move the table until after we have-
We haven't voted. We have not voted on, on the motion to close the public, we haven't voted on it.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Well, I didn't vote.
The first and the second, Commissioner.
All right.
That's correct.
Then I, then I would like to make the motion because this is my item on the agenda.
In order to save your item, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we are at the budget meeting and then we can address this issue after we've had the budget hearing. So your motion is alive and if it dies now, you don't have to worry about bringing it back in six months.
And Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do need to vote on closing the public hearing.
Oh, we, we didn't vote on, okay.
No, we didn't vote, sorry, sorry.
I thought we did, okay. Motion, okay, motion, second, mo- all in favor to close the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Then I make my motion to adopt item number three. And, uh, and amend the city ordinance, which is city ordinance number two zero 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 dash eight five six dash E E regarding the existence of four dollars and fifty cents city maintenance fee that has been in existence for twenty years. And I propose that we divert two dollars from that existing four fifty and apply same to, uh, the purchase of ambulances or equipment utilized by emergency medical services, animal shelter operations for the purpose of improving quality care for the animals and for the general operation of the cultural heritage, fine arts and, uh, and that, uh, Mr. Pete Gonzalez will work with this and that, uh, this be effective October first, the new fiscal year.
Can, can I make a, a recommendation, uh, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Because it'll apply, uh, I think it'd be, be better to set it this way. On the, um, on the-
Are you adjusting the motion, Mayor?
Pardon me?
Are you adjusting the motion or?
I'm asking him if, if he will consider this language. I'm considering if he will consider this language. Instead of saying for, of additional ambulances, I would rather say for public safety needs. That way the city manager can have a little more discretion as the needs are for public safety, the applies for the capital, whatever. Would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay, and the Brownsville Fine Arts, comma, Camille Playhouse, okay, comma, and the no-kill policy for medical, uh, needs, adoptions and education.
I have a problem with that.
Okay, is that okay?
He's amending, uh, he's amending, uh, the ordinance, he's amending B one. That's all he's amending of the ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Akerson, uh, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Okay, all against?
Aye.
Okay, it failed, okay. Sorry, folks. Okay, we have another alternative and that's item two. Would you please read that?
We can have public hearing on item two?
Yes. Well, we get the same thing, so I, I would say, okay, can we have a motion to, first, read the item, okay, first, read the item.
Item number two?
Yes, item two. Then if we can have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing, because we already been through there.
Public hearing in action on first reading warrant number two thousand seven dash fourteen seventy-six, creating a special monthly fee of two dollars for Brownsville Public Utility Board customer to be divided and dedicated towards the purchase of additional ambulances for emergency medical transport, public safety needs and the promotion of the fine arts of our cultural heritage and the animal shelter.
And again, again, with the same language that I said, uh, we've had public hearing on this. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
We can have motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, this is, uh, new money. It's, it's the same proposal, but it's new money and it will be two dollars on the- It's, it's the same proposal, but it's new money, and it will be two dollars on the, where P U B will collect it for, for this, and the city manager will distribute it.
That's in addition to the four fifty?
We, we amend the language on the, uh, on the resolution or the ordinance?
And how, how would you like to see?
Well, I, what I would recommend that we do is that we make the, the ordinance or the payment voluntary, that we encompass not just the Museum of Fine Arts, but that we have a Office of Cultural Affairs in which all of the organizations-
No, no.
I'll second.
I, 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 what I would like to see done, what I would like to see done-
My recommendations, because you asked for, you know, ideas, and I'm, I'm trying to make those recommendations.
I understand. You made a recommendation.
No, it's a motion.
But it's a motion. It's actually, this is a motion. I'm asking to amend the, the ordinance as it's written here. And the first is that it be voluntary. Second, that we have a Office of Cultural Affairs, that we get grant proposals for the funding, and that we have follow-up for the usage of the funds, so that once the goals are met, we can then real, allocate the funds.
I'll second that.
Okay. Let me, let me, you, you had made it as a recommendation. Now, you're making it as an amendment to the motion.
Yes, it would be an amendment. I'm sorry.